Good evening and welcome to the January 23rd, 2018 meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one, and I believe we have one person signed up, which is Michael Horalcheck. And just a reminder, in accordance with our policy, would you please try to keep your comments to between three and five minutes?
Hello, my name is Michael Horalcheck. I'm a Gilderland graduate and parent of three children currently attending Gilderland Elementary School. I spoke at the last board meeting to share my perspective on the board's discussions about potentially modifying the kindergarten entrance age policy, and I'm here tonight to revisit that policy and specifically to focus on one particular issue that I didn't address last time. When the age policy was first brought to the board's attention last year, the board's discussion was focused on the possibility of allowing individual exceptions to the age cutoff for children who could meet certain standards of social and academic maturity. In the course of that discussion, questions were raised about Gilderland's current December 1st age cutoff date. It was noted that many districts in New York State have an earlier cutoff date, and it appears that the recent trend is for more districts to move toward a September 1st cutoff date, in other words, toward a slightly older entering class. The argument that I heard the board discussing and that was apparently raised by some elementary school personnel goes something like this: If the currently favored approach is to move the cutoff date earlier in the fall, then isn't a policy change allowing exceptions to the December 1st cutoff a step in the wrong direction? Respectfully, this argument confuses two entirely separate issues. The December 1st cutoff is an across-the-board rule establishing an age at which Gilderland accepts any and all children into the entering class, regardless of emotional and social maturity, academic readiness, or previous schooling, and without any individualized assessment. There may very well be good reasons to consider moving the blanket December 1st cutoff to September, resulting in a slightly older class on average. I take no position on whether Gilderland should follow the trend toward an earlier cutoff date or what the best research suggests. But the issue that was before the board was whether the district's policy should allow for individualized student-by-student assessment for those few children who might not be well-served by the "one-size-fits-all" approach. That issue is equally important regardless of whether the cutoff date is in December or September. In fact, were the district to move to a September 1st cutoff, the need for individualized exceptions would likely grow more acute, as even more children who, by any objective measure, are ready to begin school are denied entry because of their age. A decision on the age cutoff date will do nothing to resolve the question of individual exceptions, and the possibility that the district, at some point in the future, may change that cutoff date provides no reason to ignore children who are poorly served by the current policy in place now. I ask the board, as it continues to consider the age policy, not to conflate the question of how to choose the best unconditional default rule for the hundreds of children entering kindergarten each year with the different question of whether to allow children to be evaluated and considered as individuals. I thank you again for taking the time to consider this policy and for listening to me tonight, and I would be more than happy to discuss my concerns further with any of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. The next item on our agenda is the 2018-19 budget development. First, we have the bus and equipment proposition. Neil? Danielle?
For those of you that don't know me, I am the transportation supervisor here in Gilderland. I'm here with my team, Michael Gannon, assistant supervisor, and Mitch Karkner, fleet supervisor. And we would like to present what we'd like to see for a bus prop for the 18-19 school year. Our current fleet exists of 73 large 66-passenger buses, 21 30-passenger, 11 18-1, which would be considered a small bus, four minivans, two large wheelchair buses -- sorry, forgot to turn that on -- and two Suburbans, for a total of 113 buses that can transport children. With our current proposal, what we're going to put on the table tonight, we're going to reduce the fleet to 110. We'll be repurposing one minivan to maintenance for, I guess we'd call it a runner vehicle, they go get parts and whatnot. We're going to keep one for our bus garage, also as a runner vehicle, and we're going to outsource or surplus 130-passenger bus. Our routing scheme for this year, with 4,840 students enrolled, we have 70 in-district bus routes, six outsourced bus routes to contractors, and included in that, we currently work with shared services with Voorisville, South Colony, Mahanesson, and Duane'sburg. We do some transportation for them, they do some transportation for us. It works out very well. We have 49 in-district routes, 21 out-of-district routes. We service 15 daycares, 14 work program sites, and numerous athletic trips daily. I'm going to apologize for some of this information. We have our oldest bus in the fleet, which is one of our large wheelchair buses, is 15 years old. We have one bus that's 12 years old, one large bus that's 12 years old, seven buses that are 11 years old, and seven buses that are 10 years old. So we have an aging fleet, with an average of 129,000 miles on each bus of the old buses. Although all of our buses meet our DOT standards, with the corrosion from the road solts, the structural integrity of the buses are compromised. The cost associated with the aging fleet is, for engine rebuild kit, is $1,700. Exhaust system runs between $2,000 and $5,000. The big difference between 2 and 5 is that with our -- when the emission standards changed in 2011, we had put very fancy exhaust systems on the buses, and they have diesel particulate filters, and they're extremely expensive to replace. So they can run upwards of $5,000 to replace an exhaust on some of these buses. Fuel tanks that rust out, $900. Radiators, $1,200. Body corrosion can run anywhere to replace and fix, $2,000 to $5,000. And when we surplus out these buses, we get, on average, $900. So I feel like we're putting good money into bad stuff, so I think we need to continue with our replacement plan. As you can see, I have some photos. I'm so sorry for getting too forward in the slide. That's all of what I just said. We have photos here, and these photos were actually taken last year, and these buses are currently still in our fleet. We have -- this is a side panel, structural part of the frame that holds the side panels on 244, happens to be one of our smaller buses. That's a rusty fuel tank over there. This is also, again, one of our small buses. Holes in the floor stringers from the rust, and this bus is currently still in our fleet. And this is one of our large buses. You can see, this is the door jam for the back emergency exit door. A year ago, that rust was there, so I'm sure it's, you know, grown over time. And these are our rust preventive methods. We have our buses undercoated every year for 10 years with Carwell Rust Protection, and we still see this rust. We have a drive-through bus wash that's open whenever possible, when weather permitting, as long as it's warm enough, it's open. Twice a year, the buses are steam washed underneath on the undercarriage, and over the summer, we actually wash and wax and clean and disinfect the entire bus. It takes all summer to do the whole fleet. We actually hand wax the buses. So there's not much more that we can do to prevent the corrosion. We do everything we possibly can. This is our 12-year purchase history. I've been here since 2012. We've been quite consistent since then with our bus purchases, and it shows. I'm pretty proud of our fleet. You know, we don't have a lot of issues, and the buses look great, so they're safe. The big topic for this year is, rather than buy diesel buses, we're going to transition to all gasoline, gasoline large buses. Each bus will be -- each unit will be about $3,500 cheaper. Most people probably wouldn't know this, but with a diesel bus, you actually plug it in in the winter, keeps the block of the engine warm, so it'll actually start in the morning. We will not have to do that with our gas buses. They're much less expensive to maintain, there's no fuel filters that ever have to be changed, there's no diesel particulate fluid, and that's part of the expensive exhaust system. You actually have to add a fluid, called diesel particulate fluid, to the bus. There's a little tank, you fill it, just like you would fill the gas tank, and it's a product that ignites within the exhaust system to burn off the soot, to make the emissions cleaner. But with that comes a lot of expense and a lot of trouble. We have a lot of problems with them. 14 less quarts of oil per oil change with a gas bus, no hard starts in the cold weather, you know, that goes with the plugging in, no diesel fuels, no expensive exhaust systems, no exhaust system maintenance, meaning part of the exhaust is the diesel particulate filter. Periodically, we actually have to remove the filter, and either we clean it by blowing it out with compressed air, or we have to send it out to be burnt off, and it cleans it all up. But once again, it's all stuff that costs money. And the buses are extremely quiet. A gas engine compared to a diesel engine is huge, and for bus drivers, that means a lot. They say, when you put them in a gas bus, they say, "Boy, the kids got louder." No, the kids didn't get louder, the bus got quieter. So that's the key there. So we're very excited about gas. We've been waiting a long time for this. Mitch and I got the opportunity to go see the gas engines being built, so it's going to be great. So we're excited, and we're going to save money. So what we'd like to see for next year is we'd like to purchase six 66-passengers, which are just standard large buses, two 66-passenger with OnSpot chains, which are chains that provide extra traction in climate weather. We like to have some of them in our fleet. We keep them mostly for the buses that travel up towards, you know, towards the burn area. We would like to replace 206, which is the 15-year-old wheelchair bus, and we'd like to replace one minivan at a cost of $1 million. Included in that cost, Linda Livingston has a photo of, we're going to upgrade our camera systems to a six-camera system, which, in this day and age, is crucial. With that six-camera system, internally, there would be a camera that is on the front bulkhead facing the rear of the bus, one in the middle of the bus facing the rear of the bus, one in the rear of the bus facing forward, one for the step well, looking down into the step well and kind of catches what the driver's up to. A stop-arm camera, this would be new to us. It's mounted on the side of the bus facing backwards, so if somebody runs through the red lights, we can capture that and get a photo of their license plate. And one on the bulkhead facing out, which we find to be very handy. Clifford's next.
One quick slide. Good evening, my name's Clifford Noonie. I'm the director of facilities for the school district. Facilities department is requesting we replace our 2003 Jacobson Large Track Mower with a similar-sized machine. This machine has three decks, it mows about a 10-foot wide swath at a time. It's one of two mowers of this size we use during peak bone season. It takes two mowers just to keep up with the school district this size. The current mower is on the lower end of fair to poor condition, has become routinely unreliable. I did put the trade value up there, just to give you guys an idea, condition of the mower, it's worth about $3,600 on the trade. A new machine of this size, purchase price is around $52,500. I will say this, that's about $10,000 lower than I presented to the Business Practices Committee a couple months ago. We were actually able to find better pricing through a federal contract versus state contract, so it actually is coming in around $10,000 lower than we originally thought it would. With that, we'll open for questions.
Sure. The Business Practices Committee did review this proposal and recommends it. Kathy, I don't know if you want to say any words about that, or?
I think I had already given a report about that, but, I mean, it's essentially what we looked at at the Business Practices Committee is essentially just what Danielle and Cliff just presented us with the, I guess, the lower cost of the mower, which is good. So that's essentially what the Business Practices looked at and committee looked at, and the recommendation of the committee was that the purchases would be -- are reasonable.
Does anybody have any questions for Danielle or Cliff? Barbara?
Not about this presentation, but about the late arrival or the very early arrival at the high school?
Yep, we will move to that for the next presentation. I think Neil's going to...
Oh, okay.
Yep, Judy?
What is the difference, why are we getting gas buses? I mean, I know why you want to get them now, why haven't we had them in the past? Is there something that's changed?
They weren't available.
They weren't available?
They went away for many years. Back in the old days, when I was a bus driver, we had them.
That's what I...
And then they went away. Diesel was cheaper, diesel fuel was cheaper. Then, now diesel fuel's more expensive, gasoline is cleaner, so they're going back to it.
Okay.
The manufacturers.
And our tanks, we can switch the tanks or do whatever, so that, you know, for refilling and all that?
We can convert one of our diesel tanks. In time, we won't have to right away, but eventually we will, because we have, you know, many small buses that are gasoline. Now we're going to transition into our big buses being gasoline, and most of the maintenance fleet, aside from a couple things, is all gas. So we will eventually, but it won't cost us anything.
No, I just was wondering. And with the vehicles that you're going to send over to Cliff, are those replacement ones, or is it just sort of, I mean, I know they're not in any great condition, or what are we going to use those for?
I mean, we currently have a minivan that was retired many years ago. It is very, it loses about two pounds every time you drive it down the road. Basically, we use that, it's used on second shift for one of our facilities supervisors, and we also use it as a runner during the day versus necessarily running in a one-ton duly pickup to go pick up parts. We'll grab the minivan and run the minivan instead and keep the miles off of their jobs.
Okay, and we don't have, they don't go through the same DOT inspection type things?
Not once they're retired to use in the maintenance department, no.
Okay, all right.
That's why we can let them rust longer.
Yeah, no, I know. I mean, I know the rust is the killer of the buses.
Sure is, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Seema?
Can you, Dandel, can you repeat what you said about the cameras? I didn't hear all of it, sorry.
Did you get to see the picture that Linda sent us?
Yeah, I was looking at it, and then I...
Missed the talking.
So currently, we have what we call four camera systems, which is one camera facing out above the main window of the bus, one camera facing, on the bulkhead facing back internally, one camera in the back facing forward, and one camera facing down into the step well. What we want to do is add two more cameras to the system, which would add a stop-arm camera, which is mounted outside of the bus, so we can catch people that run through the red lights, which is unfortunately very common. And hopefully, there will become a law where that could be used in court, and people could get fined just based on those photos. And the other camera is a mid-camera, mid of the internals of the bus facing the rear, because I don't know what it is, it must be Murphy's Law, but whenever we have an issue on a bus, it always happens to happen in the middle where we can't see it, so it's going to come in handy. We can't live without cameras now.
Does all the buses?
Well, we'll start with these eight, you know, and just continue on.
Are they fitted on the bus when the bus comes in?
No, they usually come to us, and it's part of the purchase price, but they actually get installed usually here.
Yeah, so you can put them where you want?
Over the summer, yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Gloria?
Remember a few years ago, we were talking about the well area and those mats and how that was going to cut down the rusting, the different kinds of steps?
Oh, the step wells.
Yeah, how's that working out?
Great. They ended up, it became a standard feature on the buses.
It was like a coating, wasn't it, or something?
Yeah, it's a coating. I forgot, there's a name for it, but I forget.
And we weren't sure how it was going to work out?
Well, we bought, that year, we bought two stainless steel step wells at extra cost, and two of the coated ones.
Right, and you're going to compare?
We were, but then the following year, the coated became standard.
And they're working better?
Yeah, definitely, for sure.
Any other questions? Okay, Danielle, thank you very much. Cliff, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the Gilderland High School later morning bus arrival time study. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. Just a comment, following this presentation, is tonight we're presenting the information on the bus purchase and the mower purchase. For your information, at the next meeting, we will come forward with a resolution for approval for the board, so just to make everybody aware of the process. So what I'm going to speak about, with the assistance of the transportation staff that's still here, is a little study we did regarding later bus arrival time in the morning here at the high school, and this was a request of the Board of Education for us to do this study, so we're presenting the findings for the first time this evening, or for the first time this evening. We did receive some concerns in a letter from the building cabinet about this, and basically, we have buses starting to arrive at the high school around 6:55 in the morning. The drop-off from buses for students is 7:05 a.m., so they start unloading at that time. Student day doesn't start until 7:30, so there is a gap there of about 25 minutes, and teachers aren't expected to arrive until 7:25. So we have very limited people in the building, adults in the building, for the students that are here, and there is a gap of time. So that was really the emphasis here, is what happens during this time when we're dropping students off early and they can't get into their classrooms until 7:30, and could we do something in terms of transportation to narrow that gap? So we arrived at a question, the study question, as we call it. So could buses arrive later and release students at 7:20 down to the building, so that gives them 10 minutes before the start of classes, get off the buses, get in the building, get to their locker, and still get to class? That's a 15-minute window, additional time period, for students, so they're coming, they're getting off the bus now at 7:05, so they would be getting off at 7:20. So the difference we're looking at here is 15 minutes overall. Terms of our current structure in the morning, and we have similar issues in the afternoon where we have students getting out of the high school and buses aren't here in the afternoon rate at that time, but we decided to focus on one aspect of this, so it's going to be similar on both ends, looking at that difference. So it's important to understand how our transportation system is structured. So at the high school, as I mentioned, the bus drop-off is at 7:05, students' start time at 7:30. Elementary, bus drop-off at 7:45, students start five minutes later, student day at 7:50. And the middle school, a little more of a spread, so it's 8:33 in the morning is bus drop-off, and 8:45 is actually student start of students' school day. As you can see, we have, between the high school and the elementary, we have 40 minutes to get students, after students are dropped at the high school, those buses go out to the elementary schools. They have 40 minutes from when they leave the high school to get to the elementary schools and have students there on time. Similarly, following that, from the elementary school to the middle school, it's 48 minutes, the difference between 7:45 and 8:33. So that's the maximum amount of time we have to go out into catchment areas, as we call them, out into the community, pick up students, and bring them to the school once we leave the high school or the elementary school. So we actually tried to find some empirical data to bring to you. We could talk about our assumptions about what would happen and what the difference would be and what the impact would be, but we decided to actually try to quantify this a little bit better, so we actually did a time study. And I'll just kind of give you the overview on this. So with a 7:05 departure from the high school, which was what we have now, we have 40 minutes maximum route time, as I just explained. It takes about six minutes to get from the high school to Western Ave. We did a 7:20 departure, so that brings us down to 25-minute maximum route time for us to leave the high school, pick up elementary students, and get to the school, because we lopped off 15 minutes. It took us, just because of traffic, now nine minutes to get to Western Ave from the high school, and that's without any of our bus traffic, that's just current traffic. So we're estimating that would take another, say, four minutes or so to get to Western Ave with our 23 buses that are going to be leaving the high school and all going to Western Ave. We actually think that because of increased traffic at that time, we're probably going to be down to a maximum route time of about 20 minutes to get to the elementary schools, because we're adding traffic to what's already there when we start putting buses on the road at that time. This time, I want to show you some of a video clip that we did, actually, I should say that Danielle Poirier did. She drove around, and she was able to record what it's like to leave from the high school when the buses leave at 7:05. She went up to Western Ave, turned around to Stewart's, and then really, we're going to pick up the video there, what it takes to get back from there, because that's the time our buses would now be coming through into Gilderland Center for a 7:20 drop time. So what's the traffic light, what's the impact? And then, when our buses leave again, so after dropping students off at 7:20, what it's like to get back out to Western Ave, and can we kind of see what the impacts might be from that? So it's about a half-hour clip. I'm not going to show you the whole thing, I've got certain time segments I want to hit, so I'm going to share parts of this. We're going to pick it up, basically with Danielle leaving Stewart's and coming back in, so this would be the time our buses would be coming in for a 7:20 drop-off.
Okay, so we'll be turned around, head back. So if we were going to drop the kids off at 7:20, this would be about the time that we'd be starting to come down Route 146 inbound to the high school. So it's 7:12, and I'm leaving Stewart's. This is where the problems really start. Of course, here we are on the Industrial Park Bridge. This is traffic backed up from the light at School Road. So it's 7:14, well, 7:15, it just turned 7:15. See how long it takes us to get into the high school.
Without our buses mixed in here.
So it took us seven minutes to get from the Industrial Park Bridge into the high school. I'm not even going to simulate dropping off students, but we, you know, that, of course, takes minutes, the time we all unload and start to move out of here. We're going to head back out. Okay, 7:22 still, pulling out of the high school, oh, 7:23. Back out onto School Road.
And we would also have students arriving and parents dropping on children.
And this is perhaps our next biggest challenge, is getting back out onto Route 20 here. We'd probably sit through, at this time of day, we'll probably sit through three light cycles. So what you need to keep in mind is that we start to unload at the elementary schools at 7:45. at 7:45. It is now 7:29 and we haven't even made it back out to Route 20. Of course, the buses have to go pick up children in the respective catchment zones. So there's, you know, it's just not possible with the current setup that we have without making an entire fleet of buses strictly for high school routes, which is not possible either as far as I'm concerned.
Kind of have to picture this with 23 buses now. successful in terms of the trip.
But buses can't go right on red either, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. Is it? Okay. No, that's not correct.
They can go right on red as long as there's no other person on the bus.
Okay, just the driver.
Student or bus attendant. If it's just the driver, they can go right on.
Okay. All right. Well, that'll get you through a lot faster.
So if it's just the driver, they can do right on red. If there's any passengers on the bus, they keep it. Okay. So that gave us our empirical data of what it might look like rather than trying to guess and assume what it might be like. So currently, we analyze the current routes for the elementary schools. We're not looking at Wesmir because we cannot make the times from the high school to the catchment areas in Wesmir and back to the school. So they have their own buses. So that's why they're excluded from the data. So these are really buses that do both elementary and high school. So we looked at the time of the current routes this year. So Altima, the shortest route is 26 minutes. Average is 32. The longest is 37. At Gildonlin Elementary, shortest is 21. Average is 30. The longest is 33. At Linwood, shortest is 20. The average is 29. And the longest is 38. And at Pine Bush, shortest is 19. The average is 27. And the longest is 32. So as you can see, when we've got this window of about 20 minutes now from leaving the high school to delivering children to their elementary schools on time, the majority of our runs do not meet that timeframe. This is just a graphical representation. I would focus on the line that's 20, 20-minute line. And that will show you basically where we are. So we have, in terms of the shortest, we have one that's under. We have one slightly over and one a little bit more slightly over at Linwood and Gildonlin. We're saying we could probably get there on time with those three routes. All the others, we could not make it to the elementary schools on time and have students in their seats ready for instruction. So what did we learn from this process? So what we did conclude is it's going to shorten the time that we have to pick up elementary students and get them to school on time. So right now, we have a 40-minute window. It's going to be reduced to about 20 minutes. We have 28 elementary routes. Only three are projected to arrive about on time. And of the remaining 25 routes, it could be as little as five minutes late to school, as much as 15 minutes or more. So there is quite a range there. And then that would only push that problem onto the middle school. So if you're delivering late to the elementary schools, you're going to be delivering children late to the middle school as well. We also looked at, and this is an assumption on our part about, well, if we do have more increased traffic, when we talk about students getting off the bus 15 minutes later, it would seem to make sense that maybe we could pick up students from their house 15 minutes later as well. We're not so sure that that could happen because of traffic congestion. So we are thinking that there probably isn't going to be a significant change in the time at which students are picked up from their house because now we're going to be sitting in traffic longer trying to get kids to school. Maybe a few minutes, but it's probably going to be negligible. And then finally, if we were to cross this out, which was really what the board had asked, what would cost to do this? If we would have to separate the high school runs from the elementary and middle school runs, so they create their own set of drivers and runs, we'd have to purchase 25 additional buses that would cost $2.8 million. We'd have to hire 25 additional drivers. We're, because of 25 additional buses, we would need another mechanic and a helper, we're anticipating. And we'd have increased costs for fuel, parts and maintenance. We don't have place to park another 23 buses down at the bus garage. So we'd have to resolve that issue. And we probably wouldn't have a sufficient number of repair bays either to accommodate all of the buses. So it's not a small ticket cost to make this change. We would really have to separate the high school runs out from the elementary and middle school in order to do this. So with that, I want to thank Danielle. She actually did that run three separate days so we could get consistent data. It was very consistent from day to day that we did that. We did it on different days to try to make sure. So I appreciate her time and effort. I think the visual does certainly help to give you a sense of what traffic's like at certain points in the day and particularly around the high school. So any questions?
Barbara.
A couple of things. We've talked as a board about the ideal situation of changing the high school start time to a much later time. All the empirical data indicates that from the standpoint of student learning, student safety, it is far superior to their 7:30 start time. If we were to incrementally change the elementary from a 7:50 start time to maybe an 8:15 start time with the intention that perhaps a couple of years down the road, we could do the flip. That would take care of a lot of your timing issues. If we moved the elementary time from 7:50 to 8:10 or whatever, even though the runs may be longer because if you have increased traffic, if you change the start time for that and the middle school move that up maybe to 9 o'clock or whatever would be reasonable, I think we could still do it and still take care of the high school situation as it exists now and also incrementally get us to the point where we want to be at some point if we can get suburban council to go along with us. Because again, everybody knows that that is a better situation. And the only way we with our three-tiered bus runs can do it is to change the starting times of the elementary and the middle school. So was that a possibility? Or was that just thrown out and not considered?
Wasn't considered for purposes of this study. And actually, when the board discussed this, they just said, we'll put that conversation on hold. Can we resolve an immediate issue that's been brought to our attention about students arriving at the high school much earlier than the start of the student day? So that's the study we undertook at this point.
Right. But under our teachers' contracts, doesn't the board have the right to set the time when the school day is as long as the hours are the same? Or am I mistaken there?
Well, I think that's a whole separate conversation about changing the start times of schools.
Well, I'm saying that that's one way that we could achieve what we wanted to do and not have these kids hanging around for half an hour unsupervised at the high school. We could be a little creative and change the start times of the other schools if that would take care of it.
Then you change the end times.
Really, I mean, you say, it sounds simple when you say it. But having sat on that committee four times now during my tenure at Farnsworth, it is not. Because as soon as you move one and make that tweak, it impacts everything. You'll have middle school at school till 4:30. I mean, you just keep pushing things. It really, it's not as simple as it sounds. It's a whole, I agree with Neil. It's a whole separate question and that we have to set up priorities when we take on that question. What are the things we want to accomplish? And we've tried. And I'm not saying we wouldn't try again. But I don't think you can just say, well, we're going to do it. It sounds simple to do. It's not simple. It really impacts everything.
And we just changed the elementary start time to an earlier time a few years ago, if you remember. We changed it 15 minutes earlier, I think.
To give us more teaching time.
Yeah.
But what I'm saying, you would still have the same length of day for the elementary.
Yeah, but you're pushing it further. So that means you're pushing the middle school now, you know, 4:30?
15 minutes.
15 minutes. I mean, we were trying for like all these years to move the middle school earlier because it's terrible on those kids. They're not getting into a classroom until 9:00 in the morning. Those kids are like already been up for hours. And so we're losing on that end. So we're fixing one problem. I agree, it's a problem. But we're creating, I think, others. So we have to really take this, you know, define what, where's our end goal? What do we want to accomplish? And then work towards that.
I think our end goal originally was to take care of this high school situation this year. And so my limited vision, if we added 10 minutes extra to the elementary start time and the middle school, it would perhaps solve that issue.
But then you've created two other issues. You've created an elementary and a really severe middle school issue, I think, to be that late.
10 minutes?
It's already for, what, 4:05? And then it'll be 4:15. I mean, those kids are burned out by those times of the day.
All right. Let's give Kathy an opportunity.
I just wanted to comment. We had a presentation from, was it someone in Glens Falls who had done that and said it was a two-year process to do it. So I mean, it's kind of like, it's a really long conversation to have and a long process. And it's probably not, like Neil said, it's not encompassed in this, in this presentation. This was just the question of whether the buses could drop off the kids 15 minutes later at the high school. And it sounds like we could do it, but it's going to cost us an awful lot of money for 15 minutes.
That would be ridiculous. I'm just talking basically, the 10 extra minutes that they seem to need to get the kids to the elementary and the middle school on time, still taking care of the high school situation.
But that, those, I love Danielle's, but those videos were really powerful statements. But that was without any buses even on the road. So we don't even know what the true, I mean, that was with a car driving. Would put 30 buses on that road and then we'll, then we talk about time.
And snowy days, I've been to that intersection at 20 where the Stewart's is. And the traffic is backed up as far as you could see. So you only have the time of when it says that you can go right. You can't go right on red even if you don't have any kids on the bus because the traffic is so far backed up. I mean, it's really, and it's like that on Old State Road coming over to 155. The traffic is backed up all the way to the stop sign way back. I mean, it's, and that's at 9:00 in the morning. It's, you know, she did it on, it was snowy, but it was fairly nice. But with buses, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying and I agree. But I don't, I don't think that that's the solution. I just don't think that would.
I think Teresa had her hand raised.
I was just going to say, well, maybe Barbara, when we do do that switch.
Teresa, I can't hear you. I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
Maybe when we do that switch with the, hopefully down the road with the elementary and the high school, this won't be an issue because we won't be going down that road at that early in the morning. We can only hope that'll happen at some point.
But if we don't maintain the conversation and take baby steps, we're never going to get there. It's like, oh, it's impossible. We can't do it.
No, I totally agree with you. My question or concern was even if we can do something incrementally, the 6:55 bus arriving, there's only a couple, right? I think there's one or two that arrive that early. And they sit and they have to wait in order to unload the kids because they have to get in at 7:05?
Yes.
Is there any way we can move those routes a little bit later?
We're working on it.
Just so that the kids aren't sitting on a bus for 10 minutes twiddling their thumbs?
Absolutely. We're working on it.
Okay.
It's a process.
My son's one of the kids on that bus.
Sorry.
So that's the only reason why I knew that before I had even read that. So I didn't know if that would, is there?
It's hard habits to break, quite frankly.
Is it two buses?
I think there's a few more than that.
More than that?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So I mean, that would be at least a benefit that kids aren't sitting on a bus. And also, I'm guessing that the buses are even on for that long, right?
They're only supposed to idle for five minutes. But they also have to maintain an ambient temperature inside the cabin. So it depends on the time of year.
I mean, that's, that also, I think, would be somewhat of a savings, I guess. But...
Certainly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I just had a question about, I guess more to Neil. Were there any other like options looking at not changing the times, but what to do about those 20 minutes? I feel like I vaguely remember talking about like a zero hour or something last year.
The last part of your comment, you vaguely remembered.
Something about that early time where students are basically not being supervised. Have there been like other conversations like at the building cabinet about what to, like what other solutions are besides changing start time for those students who are basically at school pretty early?
Yeah. I'm not familiar with the building cabinet conversations at the high school time. I don't know if you can address that?
We haven't really had any specific, I mean, we see it more of a transportation issue. If you're talking about increased staffing for supervision, I mean, we really haven't talked about that either. I'm going to knock on wood and say, you know, things have been pretty good and there are a fair amount of adults within the building. I think it was a two-fold issue that we were talking about. Yes, it's the time that they're in the building and, you know, and I will say, there are many teachers that get there early, that open their rooms, things like that. But it is also the issue of kids, you know, being out at bus stops early. That was one of the bigger concerns as far as parents that are on the building cabinet. You know, we felt if they could arrive later, then they would be picked up later. So at 6:15, there aren't students out at bus stops.
Is there any way to tell how much flexibility you really have? Because it just seems like you've stretched it to the limit and there's really not a lot more to do. Is that fair?
That's very fair. I mean, I think it's amazing what we do now. You know, you should come and watch it sometime to see the buses come in and go out. And just think of the fact that we transport almost 5,000 kids a day to and from school in such a short amount of time. I mean, it's a structure that I inherited when I came here. And evidently, it's been around for quite some time. It's going to be a big undertaking to change.
And we've had it looked at by outside.
I've understood.
And they have said, you're doing the maximum.
Barbara.
The other thing that puzzled me a little bit, you're decreasing the fleet. And yet, the possibility of taking care of these routes that come in so early would require, we thought originally in our conversations, that would require one or two extra buses. So why would we reduce our fleet if we're trying to get kids there at a reasonable hour?
Well, the reduction in the fleet that we're proposing is our small buses, which is a result of us contracting out a lot of our, you know, our out-of-district stuff. We don't have the drivers to accommodate this. That's part of our problem. I can't create them. They don't exist. People don't want to do the job. It's an industry-wide problem.
And Barbara, we really kept these things separate. So the proposal for next year is based on the current situation. We're also presenting this information to address the board's questions. So if the board wanted to move in that direction, certainly we'd be talking about a modification to the bus purchase proposal.
Do we know how many routes do get there so early? Maybe, you know, at some point you can just tell us. Is it three, three routes, four routes, two?
I can't give you a hard number right now, but we certainly can find that out. It's easy now with our GPS system. Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. Neil, Danielle, thank you very much for coming in and giving this presentation. We appreciate it. Mike, thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of the consent items, which consist of the minutes from the January 9, 2018 meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Barbara, second. Kathy? Are there any questions or comments? Sure. Tim?
I've been wanting to ask about the school lunch report for a while. And it always seems like there, it runs a, I don't know if deficit is the right word.
It is.
Okay. Then it runs a deficit. But it seems like that is shrinking. And is that just something that is kind of structurally there throughout the school year? And then it takes care of itself by the end of the school year?
That's the way it typically works. At the front of the year, well, let me back up. So the end of the
up. So the end of the previous year, we tried to bring down inventory. We don't want to keep inventory over the summer. So during the school year, we know we're going to continue to use material supplies, food and so on. But as we get to June, we know we're going to be off for a couple of months, we bring down inventory. So at the beginning of the year, we have a lot of startup. So we're buying a lot more food than we would normally buy, uh, materials, supplies, that sort of thing for the start of school. So it's not unusual at the beginning of the year that we would have extra expenses in not the offsetting revenue. Also, at the beginning of the school year, we don't have as many, um, lunch days, days of serving. So school starts second week of September. Uh, we don't have a full month there. We have a lot of holidays that are in the first half of the year. So we end up with some short serving day months. Um, January tends to be a month where we have more serving days. So February is shorter, but then March again is, is longer and April and so on. So there's a variety of factors that contribute to, to that, but you will see that consistently over the time we normally start with a deficit and we get better as the school year goes on. So our deficit's about twenty thousand dollars, which is very good compared to, to last year. So I think we're gonna end up at a breakeven point or hopefully a little bit better by the end of the year.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is nine zero. Now we move on to information items, curriculum and instruction. Damian?
Thank you very much. I'm pleased to report that on November tenth of two thousand seventeen, two of our district's speech language pathologists, Shawna Atsu Schnetschner of Lynwood Elementary and Anna Hansen of Gilderlin Elementary, were selected to present a professional development seminar at the National American Speech Language Hearing Association Convention, which was held in Los Angeles, California. The national conference was attended by over fifteen thousand professionals. The ASHA convention is the premier annual professional education event for speech language pathologists, audiologists, and speech language and hearing scientists. Mrs. Hansen and Mrs. Atsu presented to a group of approximately four hundred, or four hundred plus speech language pathologists from around the U.S. and Europe about the method of articulation therapy termed speedy speech that they currently use to successfully treat students with mild speech errors. Their presentation was titled Rethinking Articulation Therapy: Change Model, Change Your Life. Uh, Mrs. Atsu and Mrs. Hansen were quite, are quite honored to give the, given the opportunity to share their knowledge with fellow school-based professionals. Since the presentation, they have received multiple requests from other school-based speech language pathologists throughout the U.S. and Europe who want to learn more about their speedy speech, about speedy speech in order to employ it at their own schools. So we want to congratulate Mrs. Hansen and Mrs. Atsu. They represented us well and we thank them for their time and contribution to the profession. Um, the other little piece that I wanted to remind you of, I placed a flyer at your tables, just reminding you of the Screenagers presentation or viewing of the film Screenagers, which is on January thirtieth next, of next week, uh, seven o'clock at Farnsworth Middle School. We're expecting quite a turnout at this point, just based on some of the, the inquiries that we've had. And we're also partnering, partnering with the Gilderlin Public Library in this presentation. So you're all cordially invited and reminded of that.
Great. Thank you, Damian.
Sure.
And that's great news about, uh, the speech language pathologists.
Yeah.
Next, we move to school business information. Neil?
Yes, I'd like to provide an update on the executive budget for state aid. As I'm sure everyone is aware, on Tuesday, January sixteenth, Governor Cuomo released his executive budget proposal for the coming fiscal year. His proposal for funding public schools and other educational programs and initiatives results in a six hun- seven hundred and sixty-nine million dollar increase over the current year, which is a three percent increase overall. Foundation aid, which is the amount that's provided based on student enrollment, follows each child, is slated to increase by three hundred and thirty-eight million, reimbursement for expense-based aids by three hundred and seventeen million, and other educational programs and initiatives by a hundred and fourteen million. Under the proposal, each public school district throughout the state is guaranteed at least a zero point two five percent increase, quarter of one percent, to their foundation aid amount over the next year, over the previous year. And the aid runs released by the state under the governor's proposed budget, Gilderlin would receive the minimum zero point two five percent increase in foundation aid, which totals fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars. In addition, proposed is an increase of six thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in expense-based aids, projected total aid increase of sixty-four thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars, uh, which again represents for us and overall zero point two five percent increase.
Thank you, Neil. Are there any questions for Neil? Okay. The next item is the superintendent information. Murray?
Okay. Thanks, Christine. Uh, last week, Friday, we released a, um, survey to the entire Gilderlin school community to seek input on priorities for the spending plan for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. Um, we sent the survey out via SNN on Friday, also Facebook, Twitter, um, and information about it was shared with parents at the elementary level through backpack mail. We also sent a letter to the editor of the Altamont Enterprise with a, um, it's not the actual link, but it's the, the address of where to find the survey, which was right on our front page. Um, and then we also sent the survey out to all of our Gilderlin staff and then on Monday morning to all of our Gilderlin High School students. As of about four thirty today, we had nine hundred and eleven people
Wow!
responded.
That's awesome.
Um, and the survey will be open through February second, uh, two thousand eighteen. I'll just encourage everyone who's out there watching to go to our website and click on the survey. It takes about five minutes to do. Um, and I took a peek at some of the results and we're getting lots of feedback, just like we wanted.
Good.
Um, but we have another week or so to gather feedback. So I just encourage everyone to, to, uh, jump on there and take the survey.
Did you mention paper copies?
The paper copies don't work well with the Survey Monkey because it's got logic built into it. So I've been working with our friends at the public library to see if we can encourage people to go onto a computer to do it because it's, it's Survey Monkey, it doesn't print well.
Okay.
Which is the downside of the convenience of being able to click.
How many did we have last year? Do you remember? I thought we only had like seven hundred total.
I wanna say, yeah, I thought seven, eight hundred.
No, I think we hit, we hit a thousand.
A thousand.
Nine hundred already?
Nine hundred in a couple days. So
That's, that's terrific.
And a lot of students. So I see a lot of students out there. Thank you. Encourage your peers to, to, um, give us feedback. So part two of our community engagement will be, um, more specific. Well, let me back, back up to our survey. In the survey, we asked some demographic information and then we also asked some questions about general priorities of the areas of the budget. But then we do ask three specific questions. And Barbara, I know you'll be interested in one of these. Um, one, though, one is about our, uh, revenue challenges. As Neil just described, we don't have much to look forward to from the state. So we are concerned about having enough revenue to sustain our programming. And we ask, should we be, um, using our, uh, reserves and our fund balance? Should we be, um, cutting back on expenses for, you know, across the board of all of our programs and services? Or should we contemplate, um, piercing the tax cap? And people are giving us feedback on that. And then there's an other, there are other ideas. So that's one question. We also have another question about the Cobblestone Schoolhouse. That's been a topic we've talked about a lot. Um, and the question is really one direction or another? Should we hang on to it and figure out what to do with it? Or should we try to transfer it to another entity? Um, and then please give us ideas that you have. So people have been responding to that as well. And then the third detailed question has to do with start times at our buildings. And the way we structured the question was to gauge individuals' level of satisfaction with our current structure. Um, it was hard to write a question that would imagine something different, but people know what we have. So they can be very satisfied, satisfied, neutral, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied. And we'll wait to see the feedback on that. So again, please participate. The next wave of work, um, on the, um, fifth of February, we're gonna be releasing a list of actual proposals that will be under consideration for the first draft of the budget. So while the survey is very general, do you think the arts are important? Do you think enrichment is, is important? This will be specific items that will be contemplated for the budget. We will release that online. We'll provide an opportunity for people to tell us what they think about those proposals. And then in the hour prior to our regular meeting on February thirteenth, we'll have an opportunity for people to come and learn more about those proposals, ask questions. The format of that, which I think we'll want to talk about when we get to committee reports. Um, the only other thing I'll mention is that we will release the first draft of the budget on March sixth. So there's a lot of work to do between now and then. Um, and I will say it is very challenging work based on all the things we would like to do and all the things we'd like to keep and the resources that seem to be, uh, on the slim side from the state aid side. We will be gearing up to talk with our legislators. I've already reached out to, um, uh, George Amador's office and I tend to go to Pat Fahy's open house this morning and follow up on some invites to bring them here to talk to us. So that's at least the beginning of our community engagement.
Great. Thank you, Murray.
Sure.
Sure. Teresa?
A question just dawned on me with the, um, Survey Monkey, Marie. Um, if you have, do you have to have multiple emails in order for multiple people to, in the same house to reply? You know?
I don't think so.
Like the same email could reply? Like, I'm just thinking, like with me anyway, I have multiple emails and my husband has an email, my kids do, but some people have joint emails. Where I wonder if like a husband and a wife, for example?
Well, you go to the link. So I think once you get to the link, you're, you can do your own survey.
So it wouldn't say you've already done, you've already done the survey? Cause the same email?
We do have to trust that people will be honest about it if you're asking if you can do the survey more than once.
Well, I'm just thinking if like a husband and a wife share an email, they'd be able to both deal on the same email account.
Yes. So one year we did this. We actually did go back and look at IP addresses because there were, um, some verbal responses that were the same words verbatim, like thirty times in the survey. So we were able to go back and check IP addresses and we actually traced one to a interesting location that I won't disclose. Um, so we've also, we've been criticized that, are you sure people are being honest? And I'd like to believe that yes, people are being honest. And for the most part, they're gonna weigh in. And if, if not, well, so be it.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Is the thirteenth our next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is school business management action items. Neil?
Thank you, Christine. First item this evening is a resolution to approve the right of entry for survey and exploration agreement permitting the Department of the Army to perform the proper closure of monitoring wells associated with the former Schenectady Army Depot, Horrisville area. And during the remediation, decade-long remediation efforts associated with the former Army Depot, there were seven monitoring wells placed on our property by the Army Corps of Engineers and that allowed them to take and monitor water samples throughout this time. Now that the project is officially closed, uh, the Army has an obligation to come back and make sure those monitoring wells are properly closed. And that's what the right of entry allows them to do access to our property for that purpose.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the resolution? Judy, second. Teresa, are there any questions or comments?
Yeah, I just, are you satisfied that this is all, they've gotten everything that they needed and done what they needed to?
Yes. And, and again, it's not my judgment on this, but, um, they've worked closely with New York State, um, Department of Health and Environmental Conservation. Uh, so, so they had to pass muster with them. This is the federal government as well. And, and then we hired Needham Associates on the district's behalf to go in and, and look at the data as well. So trying to make sure that somebody was protecting the district, the state had its role and the federal government had its role. So all the indications are that this was handled properly and it's appropriate to close. And that decision's, that determination has already been made.
Okay.
Final report filed. So, um, this again is just allowing them to come back in and do the final steps to close those monitoring wells properly.
Thank you. Yes, Barbara?
Would we ever need any of those wells for watering our playing fields or anything? Or aren't they?
No, they're not functioning wells. There's just a way for them to pull water samples and test. So we, we have our own, um, wells to, to do our athletic fields, irrigation wells. Uh, so we don't need them. And, uh, we also don't want to maintain and keep them as, as well. So I think it's appropriate that they be closed by the Army who installed them.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next we have a resolution to amend the facilities committee compensation, composition, excuse me. Not even that long of a night, I can't remember. Uh, by increasing from three to six the number of parent teacher association and/or community representatives.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the amendment? Teresa, second. Kathy, are there any questions or comments?
I would just comment that the, um, the Business Practices Committee met and reviewed, um, these resumes and also, um, uh, one that was received, um, after our meeting. And, uh, there are four people with qualifications, um, in, um, relevant fields and, uh, to also two PTA representatives. And it was the, um, uh, judgment of the, uh, Business Practices Committee that it was, it was good to have, um, all these people who are interested. And so that's why we had recommended increasing the, um, number.
Thank you, Kathy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero.
Uh, next we have the actual appointment of individuals to the facilities committee. I don't know if the board has
Yep. Um, so we received one letter of interest and that came from Judy Slack. So she will be the Board of Education representative.
Congratulations, Judy.
Okay, now continue. Thank you for settling that.
I liked it.
That was easy.
Yeah.
So we have our Board of Education representative, Judy Slack. Um, Dr. Wiles, Dr. Singleton and myself are automatic members of the committee. So
Fuck you.
No choice on that one. Uh, Cliff Dooney, who's our Director of Facilities, who was here earlier this evening, is on the committee as well. For the elementary principal representative, it's going to be Alan Lockwood from Gilderlin Elementary. Secondary principal or assistant house principal will be Michael Blaster, middle school principal. Um, the instructional administrator for math, science and technology will be Mike Biscatelli here at the high school. Um, maintenance mechanic will be Michael Hurley. Uh, Gilderlin Office Workers Association Representative, Mary Toscano. Gilderlin Teachers Representatives, Carrie Denine, Brian Hughes, Emily Minogue. And Parent Teacher Association slash Community Representatives, as we mentioned, there's six of them, Kim Blasiak and Carmen Valverde from the PTA side and from the community. And these were all people that had, um, some background or interest or background, excuse me, background in construction or facilities management. Michael De Lima, Emilio Genzano, Pasquale Marchis and Ian Richardson. And then we have two high school representatives as well. Viva Barthe and Atticus Madkin. So robust committee.
Thank you, Neil. May I have a motion to approve the facilities committee appointments? Gloria, second. Kathy, any questions or comments? Sure. Tim?
Yeah, I was just curious. Um, there, there's a, if I counted right, there's seven administrators of that, um, six members of the community. You have the two students, but then for, uh, just your Gilderlin employee that's in the trenches, that's in the actual facilities and buildings, there's one maintenance, one office worker, the three GTA. And, uh, I was just curious about representation for a teaching assistants and, uh, the food service workers. Um, food service seems like a very integral part of all the buildings. So, um, just wanted to, uh, throw that out there.
Okay. And this is, uh, similarly structured to what we've had in the past with, with representation. Um, and we, we try to look at, at groups. So on the, uh, support staff side, uh, we felt it was important to have a maintenance mechanic as part of the committee because those are the people that are currently addressing the problems within the buildings, uh, heating, plumbing, electrical and so on. Um, they could be an asset during the process and understanding where we have needs, what works well, what doesn't work well from their experience. Uh, so we tried to spread the representation. We also tried to keep the committee at a, at a manageable level. So, um, it's always a balance. Um, what makes an effective committee? Uh, what kind of expertise you need, what kind of representation you need? So it's certainly subject. I mean, we reviewed this with the Business Practices Committee, uh, who found it acceptable. But if there's a, well, uh, twist in changing, we could
Well, in the, in the, in the course of the process, when you're going through, um, in, in, input is given, is taken from the various areas. I mean, from people.
Correct.
I mean, it's not like the people are shut out. They may not sit there, but like facilities, the representative from, from the maintenance facilities person would be a person who would be tapping into those other areas and bringing the input back.
Right. And that's a bargaining unit. There is a bargaining unit. Has food service workers that has their maintenance staff.
Right.
Personnel staff. So the idea there was we So the idea there was we get a representative from that bargaining unit as opposed to looking at it more specifically at job title.
It's just like the teachers would have a responsibility to get input from the various, you know, buildings, from the staff.
And the obligation is to report back too. So the expectation is whether it's a board member on the committee such as Judy or any other representatives, is they're gonna be talking with their units or their associations and sharing information about the process, what's being looked at, what's being recommended. But that's an obligation we put on those people that are on the committee as well. Good representatives for their constituents.
I think that's important to emphasize.
And if somebody had a deep interest, I mean, like we included an extra community person, you know, that, that's what we were speaking of too, is that we'd at least look at, at what they had to say. They aren't automatically shut out, I think.
And it's a, it's a committee that's gonna meet a lot, meet evenings, you have to, you gotta, have to dedicate the time. It's, we really are gonna start, hopefully mid to late February, we're gonna go right through to June, we gotta produce a report, so there's a work product, a lot of things that have to be discussed and worked out, you have to be there consistently, otherwise you kind of lose the process as you go along, what was discussed and what wasn't. So it is a big commitment for those people that have indicated a willingness to be on the committee.
Okay. But Neil, did you indicate that if it were the will of the board to add an additional one or two people, that would be something that we could do?
We certainly could. I will tell you, we haven't had interest expressed to us from, from other people, but certainly there's a sense that there's an unrepresented area of the organization.
Is that something you would be interested in doing? Or, you know, if a majority?
Yeah, now if somebody expresses interest, I guess then we could follow through on this. I don't know if this will spark that interest or not, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know how to inform people that there, this would be a possibility. Alan?
The only question I guess I'd have, very similar to this, how do we get input from all seven buildings? Because it doesn't look like any building is represented, but I'm not familiar with all the peoples here, so I might say.
Well, the teachers, and you wouldn't know this probably by the names, but they did choose an elementary, a middle school and a high school representative. So by design, they're looking to, again, make sure there's input for each of those levels as well as the ability to share out and make that process work. So I think some of them, most of them are leaders in, in their associations, so they have a district-wide role and responsibility to meet with their constituency groups. So a lot of the associations have regular meetings, so this would, again, be a sharing out on a district-wide basis, certainly allowing for feedback and input, and that's what we would hope would happen during the process, that the representatives would be bringing back whatever they're hearing from their members, so that we can consider that as well. So I would say by and large, we have in the past always, we, it hasn't been an issue that we felt that one area was underrepresented and one wasn't, and we've typically done projects and encompassed all seven buildings. So Alan Lockwood, who's not here, he, elementary principals, me, so that's an opportunity for the elementary principals to have a voice as well, so lots of opportunities just required.
Seema?
This is, I guess, this is related to a question I'll ask later, but since we're talking about facilities, I'm guessing this will be talked about, like the temperature of the buildings? Cause I feel like I've heard a lot of feedback about the temperature in the buildings when it's extremely cold and since it's the facilities committee, I'm assuming that's what, that will be on there?
Oh, yes. I mean, one thing to remember with buildings, and Cliff would tell you this if he, if he were here, the difference between your home and the school is we have a requirement to bring fresh air in. And if it's cold outside, we're bringing cold, fresh air. So people get that unevenness, but you just keep your windows and doors closed for hours, you are fine. We have a state law that says throughout the day, you've got to introduce fresh air into the environment, so. It's a tough in the Northeast when we have to do that.
Winter like this, it's so common, it's a big complaint.
The dampers don't open as much, but it's still a requirement to bring some fresh air into the building.
Somehow we should at the beginning of the school year explain, or the beginning of the winter, because every, every year I hear, you know, and I did too, I always complained, I'm freezing in this room. I bring in the thermometer and everything. Well, it'll be okay up here, but down here, the cold air's coming in here. So somehow, you know, we have to relay people at the beginning, just say, look, you gotta put on your long john, you've gotta get layers on because it's gonna be chilly.
And I think the principals in their letters probably do that. It seems to me, I've read it, you know, getting to be that time of year or something.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero. And then I guess Neil, is there some way that that message can be communicated to those groups of people?
Yep, we can take it down.
Okay, thank you.
Final action item for this evening are general fund transfers and they're outlined in your materials.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part of it.
They're outlined in your materials, the specific transactions.
May I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Seema, second. Barbara, questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero. And now we move to superintendent action items. Marie?
I just have one item this evening. This is a admittedly late recommend, request to create a co-curricular club called the Butterfly Club. As you know, Carol Kelly runs our summer program around the butterfly station and she and some students would like to get a jump on the activities by beginning essentially now. This is an unstipended part of her work and Mr. Piper asked me to entreat the board to recognize that just once, just this once, they will create this club and then from now on, they will make the November deadline. So I come to you on their behalf.
Once they're created, we don't have to come back.
The next time, there's a new one, so.
Oh.
Yes, once created, we're good.
May I have a motion to approve the formation of the Butterfly Club? Judy, second. Gloria, questions or comments?
I think it's great that they wanna do it.
Yeah.
As long as she's not going to Mexico to get those butterflies.
I think they send them there.
I know.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure they'll appreciate it very much.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero. And now we move to board president action items and we have several policies that are here for approval this evening. Barbara, do you wanna weigh in on these again?
Not necessarily, they're, they're all in front of us, we discussed them last time round and I think the most outstanding one is the Inters Classic Athletics Placement Process. And we haven't heard any negative response, so hopefully it's good to go.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the Board of Education policies? Barbara, second. Tim? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Pass is nine zero. And now we move to board committee reports. Audit, Teresa?
A doodle went out to have another meeting. At least one.
We haven't selected a meeting yet. We haven't got all the responses back.
Okay. Business practices, Kathy?
Oh, well, actually I just talked about what we discussed at our last meeting, which was just increasing the number of community members on the facilities committee. I don't, I, our next meetings are in March, I don't know if we need another meeting, if we have another issue that we need to discuss, but maybe we could do a doodle poll for another meeting.
We'll do that.
Communications, Gloria?
We met on January 11th and Marie just about covered everything, which is fine, but she did leave us one thing to do. The hard part, we have to do this. February, no, February 13th, the next meeting, for the hour before, we will engage the community, invite them to come if they wish to talk about some of the proposals that are, for the budget that are out there. And also, what we need to know is how to structure that time. I think I misunderstood after we met, I thought we were gonna do it as, people come and sit as one whole group and then we have a microphone and the board's on the side and people could come up and share their thoughts or ask their questions and we'd have the, the staff here, the DOT and the administrative team to answer any questions. I think Marie thought maybe we had talked about having small groups and people would go and sit in a group by topic and ask and engage that way. So I guess we're at the point, how did the administrative team come down when they met and talked about it?
Well, this was the danger of having three conversations in one day about that topic. So the administrative team talked about having, actually four tables set up in the back part of the LGI, so people aren't moving, one for high school, one for middle school, one for elementary and one for the non-instructional. With, you know, the, the collection of the proposals for each, and then people could come, we would start with a brief upfront presentation with the results of our survey, like five minutes, nothing long. And then individuals could go to the place where they have questions and, you know, just have more of a free flow. So, but either is fine. Our concern is if we don't get people, we've had fairly low turnout, so if we have just a large group, I don't know if that's.
Well, whoever comes, my, my concern, and I think I voiced it to you in the email, is that I think it's, when you have small little groups of people going over and asking their questions, everybody's not benefiting from the hearing, the discussion or the idea or the question, whereas, and the person could sit there and answer the question six times from six different people. Whereas if you're in a, a large group, even if it's only ten people, we're all hearing together, we can all build on each other. I, I think it's just a better transparency because we're all in the conversation, we're all hearing the concerns together, we can answer the concerns or not and whatever. And then, I guess that was my personal opinion, that instead of going off in little groups, all being together. And I think, I think, and that's what I was trying to remember, but I think that's how we did it last time, where the board sat on the side and we had the, anybody who came, sat here, came up to a mic and we could listen to the concerns.
Well, that was, that was after we released the budget. So last year for the equivalent meeting, we had a presentation here and then we had separate rooms set up.
Right.
And we didn't get enough people.
No, that, that did not, no.
So if we were to do it, I think two years ago, we had everybody in this room.
Yeah.
And people more, it was more of a mingling and then we had an administrator at each of those tables take notes so that, cause we couldn't be everywhere either.
Exactly, but see, when you're listening to one, everybody's hearing the same message rather than relying on people to, you bring that group soon. So anyway, that was my two cents, but we're open to listening.
We're fine with either.
Okay.
I, I would agree with you wholeheartedly. If we could have them set up over there somewhere and people could ask a question, then like you said, they wouldn't have to answer it six times and everybody would hear. So I sort of like that format.
And I think there may be areas that have more people and maybe areas that don't, and if everybody's involved, I think that's a better, a better way to do it. Okay. All right. So we've got that answer. Hopefully we'll have lots of people. And the only other thing I think you did mention is we talked about the board retreat and we said, we asked, you're gonna follow up with Robert and find, get a better description, hone in on the description of what we're gonna do the next time we get together, to kind of finalize that.
And a date.
And a date.
So I did reach out to him and he was delighted to hear, to have an opportunity to come back and work with everyone again. He's doing some work in the south and supposed to be back soon and we would touch base then, so I'll have a date, or a couple of dates from which to choose.
Okay, and, and we are meeting again on March first, first at eight AM at Marnsworth.
Great, thank you. Policy committee, Barbara?
We're meeting February 5th, I believe, I think at five o'clock, yes.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
At night, Barbara, in the morning? Yes, five o'clock. Not five in yet.
Just checking, I know you're an early riser.
Thank you, Barbara. And now we move on to public comment number two. Lynda, do we have anybody signed up?
Oh, she's good.
Okay. And now we move on to board issues, ideas and sharing. Does anybody have anything they would like to add, Barbara?
I just wanted to compliment the, the teachers over at Altman Elementary School. They put on with their fifth grade as the Little Mermaid and I tell you what.
I, I heard it was sold out, so I didn't try.
What kind of talent they pulled out of those little kids. It was absolutely amazing. Even to the costuming and the backdrop, everything was, was absolutely fantastic. They only started before Christmas and what Mr. White man said is that when the kids came back, a lot of them had really learned their lines and it showed. I mean, they, they were absolutely phenomenal, so congratulations to everybody that helped there. It was really, really wonderful, yeah.
Great, thank you. Gloria?
I got to go to, I don't know if anybody else got, maybe you got to go to the.
The gallery?
Yep, the team, the Hiawatha 6B, which is the Minow Rogatsky team, sixth grade, and they do this every year, they have a, a gallery, a learning gallery.
Oh, it was on a snow day though, wasn't it?
Well, then it got moved.
Oh, I never got to notice it was.
It came out, I didn't see it. Anyway, it did. Anyway, they do a outstanding job and it's all project-based learning and they, they really just show off all they've done in the areas, math, science, and I had three, three wonderful guides, I told them, I'm gonna mention their names, Theodore Brown, Ian Fish and Ashwarya Selvam. They took me around and they, they challenged me with math problems and everything, it was so much fun. I have to, so if you get a chance, I know it's during the day, so it's hard for a lot of people, fortunately I could go, but I tell you, they do an outstanding job, so thanks, guys.
Thank you. Seema?
I'm just mentioning this as, as a messenger, so I went to the, to the PTA meetings that I went to in the past couple of weeks, there were parent concerns about that frigid cold day that we didn't have like a delay or, I think we were like one of two districts. And so a couple of people asked about how cold is too cold, like is there a policy about having kids wait outside, also about the backpack program. I heard about that at the high school, I don't know if they have that at all the schools and having, like having the assumption that all students have like the proper attire to, you know, dress for cold weather. And so I guess there were a lot of people worried about, you know, their students getting to school versus the safety of their kid. So I just said I would pass on the message.
Did any of them talk about the app and, you know, cause it tells you when your bus is coming, so you don't have to stand out there that long?
I've heard, I've heard mixed reviews about the app, I didn't bring.
Okay, I don't get to use it, so I'm not sure, but, to me it sounded like, like a great idea, you could just say, oh, it's coming in two minutes and get out there.
I don't know if it's that accurate, but, but I didn't bring up the app, so.
I was curious if anybody of them mentioned.
Since it was two different elementary, or two different schools.
Yeah.
Marie, do you wanna respond to that? Because you did share with us and it was a very reasonable.
Yes, it's very.
Response as to why you did what you did.
So let me back up a little bit. There was some conversation among superintendents the day before about what's, how cold is too cold? And there is no policy or procedure and, but there is in, in Schenectady County, they, that collection of superintendents said, in their mind, minus twenty-five with wind chill is too cold. So that email was circulating the night before and I don't know if that's too cold or not, I mean, it's, it's cold. So a couple of schools decided to close the night before, Albany was one, and, you know, they have so many walkers, they have different kinds of issues that, than we have. So when Danielle and Cliff and I spoke, it was before four in the morning, you know, we're looking at all the reports, we had planned ahead of time to have the buses started, we had our staff in, they started the buses, the buses were warm, the walkways were clear, the parking lots were clear, and the weather report was that it was actually going to be colder if we waited later in the morning. So my colleagues who had two-hour delays had reasons for two-hour delays, their buses weren't starting, they didn't have staff in to start the buses, some of them had issues with clearing sidewalks. We didn't have any of those things. So other than the fact that it's cold and everyone else is having a delay, there was no empirical reason for us to have a delay. So Bethlehem had the same set of circumstances, they too didn't have any issues. So we had a long conversation at the last superintendent's meeting about closing because there's a, it's a terrible decision, just so you know. If I could pick the number one thing I dislike about my job, that's it. Because no matter what I do, it is not right. So every day, there's a, a weather issue, somebody calls me to tell me why I got it wrong. And I, I wanna say this, we take the decision unbelievably seriously and bottom line is everyone cares about student safety and it's not just me, it's Danielle and Cliff and Neil and every single person who's gotta weigh in on that. So do we always get it a hundred percent right? Nope. Sorry, I can't, I'm not a weather person, I'm often predicting the weather for three hours later than when I have to make the call and then. and then six hours beyond that. We do the best. We do want kids to come to school for some of our kids, this is where they get their meals. So we try to do the best we can. I also hear a lot about parents with their kids who are new drivers. I can only say, we have, as you heard tonight, we have a wonderful bus fleet with experienced drivers, they're heavy vehicles, they're well-maintained. If you have any concern about your child's ability to navigate questionable roads, take the bus. Take the bus. I know that's not popular. I totally get it. Students will be emailing me and telling me why it's not popular. But the bottom line is, you know, we're always trying to balance our interest in getting students to school and also keeping them safe. And we have a long winter ahead of us, it's only January 23rd. We have five snow days this year, just so you know, we've used one. We have four more to consider. I for one am the happiest person when spring arrives. And I have many colleagues who also wear the head of superintendent who feel the same. But I want families to know, I do not take it lightly. And if there's any question that students won't be safe, I'm not going to put those buses on the road and have kids in school. But it's not a perfect science.
Thank you, Marie.
Sure.
Anyone else, Barbara?
This is just a question from Marie. I know we've gotten a lot of letters on the potential change in the kindergarten admission age. Do you want to share any updates, how the committee is going along or, you know?
Well, we were going along swimmingly until we had a late start, two-hour delay last week. So we're meeting again Thursday morning. We have a committee that's comprised of five kindergarten teachers, two principals, two school psychologists, a speech language pathologist, Damian, Suzie Lamandola, and I'm kind of the facilitator of it. We met three weeks ago on that very cold day when we had school. There's a pattern here. And talked about looking at kind of categories of work. So research around kindergarten readiness from an academic, social, emotional perspective. We looked at our own teacher experience and expertise around those issues. And then we're very interested in our ability to do the assessment well. Because this is mostly a question about getting it right for individual children. So there's been a lot of discussion in general that we're opening the floodgates to four-year-olds left and right. And the reality is, we're opening the door to a very small handful of students. And our challenge will be to make a good decision if it's right for this child based on the assessments that are out there. And the assessments are not fail-safe. Damian and I hit a conference call with our counter parasite Shenandoah last week. They gave us some really good insight into how it plays out there. And the theme I heard was, when we get it right, it goes great. So there's just a lot of pressure to get it right. And it's, it's difficult sometimes to fully assess a child's readiness at age four. But we're going to try to get it right. You know, the committee is likely to weigh in to say, they'd love for the district to do this, or they'd love for us not to do it. But part two will be, and if we do, here are our recommendations for making the policy as appropriate and user-friendly for us as possible. So you will have probably a couple individuals from the committee at our policy committee on February 5th. We'll put together some written materials for the whole board and you'll have something to deliberate over on the 5th. But they're doing great work. Damian, I don't know if you want to weigh in if I missed anything.
I think you summed it up fairly well. Looking forward to the conversation on Thursday, though.
We've been getting, you know, articles here and there, people have been sending us, so, and some of them, you know, are rather lengthy and technical. Is there any way that, is the committee kind of sifting through the research and will give us like a, because I remember, you know, pros and the cons, what are the-
Yes.
Good falls, what are the advantages, you know, kind of thing?
We have charged them with trying to sort through it.
Sort that, I know, there's a lot out there.
It's a heavy lift.
It is.
But I can summarize it in two words. It depends.
Okay, so I don't have to read those other 57 pages.
So that's what we're wrestling with. And, you know, what Shen explained to us is they have every year between 12 and 15 families who inquire about the possibility and maybe six to 10 who actually go through the testing process. And of those, there's one or two where it's obvious, okay, this youngster is ready. And then the rest is very gray or clearly no. And that's where it gets difficult, where it's gray.
So there's no, like, cutoff?
No.
Oh, see, well-
It's a judgment. And so you may have a score on a academic or psychological kind of testing. But it is accompanied by the recommendations from preschool providers and others. And if they're in a gray area, then they ask the families to bring the children in and work with, like, their literacy specialists and so on, to gauge whether or not, you know, letter sound recognition, letter, you know, all of those kinds of screening kinds of pieces are there. But also, how is this child separating from mom who brought him in or brought her in to be tested? And all of those become a judgment call. And, you know, again, do you make the right call? And is the information, it's kind of like calling the weather. Is the information you can gather clear-cut and reliable enough so that you can feel with confidence, yes, this is the right-
But the final decision is made by the school?
By the committee.
Okay.
There's a little committee that will be chaired by Damian. It's, it's in Shen. Now, we can take this.
Yeah, I know, differently.
Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, a school psychologist, a building principal from a building not on the receiving end of a potential student. And then they have like a literacy specialist or some elementary specialist who can make some kind of judgment. And they make the call. And when it's no, it's very difficult.
Right, right. But, that's good.
Yeah, because the parents are doing it.
There's got to be an end, an answer at some point.
The committee decides.
Shen is only a half-day, aren't they?
Yeah, that's, that's another big thing to consider.
A full day is a lot longer than a half-day for a little kid, so.
I'm sure you know all that.
Is there any consideration given into how close to the cutoff the person is? I think we got, somebody had said, I think it was a letter or something, said that their-
Seven hours.
Their, their, yes, their child was born literally like less than 24 hours past the deadline. So, but if, if like someone's born on, on November 30th, they can go to kindergarten, no questions asked, no psychological testing, no readiness, no nothing, but they're born seven hours later, then they have to go through this whole process, it seems.
Well, you have to have, at some point-
It is kind of funny, but, I mean, I just wondered if there was any consideration given to someone being really, really close.
Well, no matter what, there'll be a cutoff. So in the Shen policy, they have a very generous window of April 1st.
Wow, what?
Yeah, so if you turn five by April 1st of that first year-
You're four for the whole year kindergarten.
So you get December, January, February, March. You get four months of a window. So what if I'm born April 2nd?
Whatever date you set, there's always going to be the seven hours later.
So.
April 1st.
But they, they selected that, right? I mean, I'm assuming like-
Yeah, and that's a variable that this board-
But again, it's a half a day. Yeah, it's, that's a different, is there anybody has a full day? Does, has us?
Shen's the only one in the broader region here. We did find some examples of policies from around the country. You had a-
Out-of-state policies, Jim.
Anything in Massachusetts?
Uh, not that I recall.
Who sets the December 1st date? Does the state?
No.
Not in New York. There is, it's largely December 1st across New York State. Some other states will set the policy. There are some states that have set it at September 1st, like Mr. Heralchek mentioned. There are some that they say the LEA can decide, meaning the school district. That's New York, actually, but the vast majority of schools in New York State have 12-1.
Just find it arbitrary instead of at least like 31st. I just, I don't know how the first ever-
I don't know. It's been that way for, I can't remember.
Now, the average class size up at Shen is, what, pretty close to 800 or 900?
You know, I haven't done the math that way, but I did look at the data for their kindergarten class sizes and it was pretty small, it was 18, 19, because of their half-day.
I mean, the whole kindergarten class.
First grade, second grade, third grade.
Well, they've got 10,000 kids, so, yeah, that's roughly.
The only reason why I asked that, I mean, if they get about 10 requests and then grant maybe three or four, and if you bring that down to our level where we're having class sizes of maybe 400, you know, I don't think we'll get, you never know, but 10 requests maybe would become five requests for ourselves.
Right.
You know?
Could be a small number.
We're not talking-
No, we're not talking.
Huge numbers here.
Numbers.
Okay. Anything else? Yes, Gloria?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to say-
I know, you sound like- I just wanted to say that only three people, and I was one of them, did the survey from the last meeting. So-
I thought we were, we were told by the, by Robert, or if we're not doing anything with it, why continue to do it? Because I've done it every time up until then. And then I thought-
Well, we need to-
I thought somebody said it does more harm than good if we don't do anything with it after.
Okay, well, then let's either decide or not, because, I mean, Lynda's sending it out and we're not doing anything with it. So if we're not going to do it, we're not going to do it, we'll come up with something else eventually, whatever. But if we're not getting anything useful from it, somebody has a strong-
Who uses it?
We were, communications had looked last year, you know, we looked at it and we talked about it, but it didn't go anywhere. We said we would revise it and we haven't revised it.
Okay, so do you want to go back?
Any strong feeling we should continue it?
I normally do, I just, I don't know what happened. I don't know if I-
Okay, maybe just-
Maybe that might be the only one I- And I don't think it gets sent. It's a weird thing on my computer, so.
Barbara?
I would sort of like to throw it away.
Okay, I heard you.
The only reason why I say that-
We're not using it.
You know, we, we haven't done anything with it. The things that I found most helpful were when people put comments. I mean, the questions become so repetitive in the sense that they're meaningless.
And some of them don't pretend.
Whereas if you just send out a general thing of comments, you know, would you like to comment on the last meeting?
Just the end of it, like a little blurb to start a sentence. Meeting went well, in the meeting, a problem I saw, just something to start. And if you wanted to fill it out, fine, if not.
Right, and then you guys could do something.
All right, we'll do, we'll talk about that at communications. We'll come up with two little just thing and you fill it out. And if you don't-
Well, something that you can just type in, in other words, not a checkbox.
Yeah, you would, you would type something in.
Right.
The one thing I would say is it does, when I get them-
It does make you think.
Yeah, it causes, it's some reflection time on what went on and how we're doing.
And hopefully if we just do two little things and people type something, somebody will reflect, still be a reflection.
Yeah.
Alan?
I'm not opposed to doing it, but unlike the survey that we had, we never talked about it, never, we may have talked about it in communications, but if there are issues or problems, we looked at some of the graphs there. We did that in the question, but we never discussed it.
We did, we brought it to the full board a couple of times about the numbers of people responding and then the respect thing. We did, there were a couple of times we did bring it up, but it, I, I agree, it's not useful, so. It's not.
Unless we're going to make that concerted effort to talk about it on a regular basis, but on a scheduled basis, take some time to reflect back on it, I wouldn't be opposed to the question. I'll answer the question. The question really happens. Ask two questions.
Well, we got, we have, I think we have to have some way for people who may not feel comfortable saying something out, to write, if there's something that's bothering them, to have an opportunity to say it. If something happened at the meeting, there's their chance. And if it's significant, I think, you're right, we need to look at it. And maybe we need-
I understand why you want to do it, okay? Just to understand why.
Yeah, well, and maybe we need to think about how do we get it back, how do we use it after that? Maybe we summarize it in a month and say, these were the positive comments, these were the things that came up. We'll talk about it.
Teresa?
I have no, I'm not against the questionnaires at all. I think they're great, it's just the questions asked, I've always had an issue with-
Human endeavor?
I don't even know how to answer some of the questions.
Human dimension.
I know, right. Do we attend to the human dimension?
Just get rid of that question.
I had an issue with the questions. I just thought they weren't straightforward. I really had to think, well, I don't really know what the question's asking. So I don't know how to, I don't know what the question's asking, I don't know how to answer it. I literally was like at a, taking my SAT and saying, C. So that, to me, isn't good data.
It's not.
But so I, I'm not opposed to doing it. I don't think they're bad. I just think that the questions, and I agree with what Barbara's saying, is the comments I thought were good. Even four or five, you know, one through five answers aren't bad, it's just the questions I think we need to revise. And I wouldn't mind working, I don't want to put it on you being in communications.
No.
But I think it's something-
No, I think we just need to keep working at it. I think we do need to keep working at it. We shouldn't just not do it. We should do it, but find a way that works for us.